First presentation is going to do the pledge of allegiance.
Okay. Good, what is this, afternoon or early evening? The Sacramento City Council will come to order for its meeting that was supposed to begin at 5:00. I'll explain in a moment, but would the clerk please call the roll to establish quorum?
Thank you. Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Chenier, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Carr, and Mayor Steinberg. And we do expect Councilmember Hanson momentarily.
Right, here. Okay. I would like the students from Joseph Bonheim Elementary School to please come up if you would give us the honor of leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please. Ready?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you very much for starting us out this afternoon. Members of the public who may have arrived at 5:00 for the scheduled start of the meeting, I apologize, we apologize to you. Our council budget and audit committee, we're a week away from passing a city budget, our Budget and Audit Committee began at 2:00 and it ran way over because of the importance of the issues. And so, that is why we can't start this session until 6:00, almost 6:30. So, I'm sorry if anybody was inconvenienced as a result. We have a relatively short calendar. We have a couple presentations. Councilmember Guetta?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I want to ask our new Joseph Bonheim Elementary School students and Principal Artman and also our good friends at Corolo Engineering to come on over. And also, our community volunteer Kalen Wright also to come on up here as well. In the first week of May is National Water Week, and we talk about all the important things of drinking water. And during that week, and in fact, all during the month of May, Corolo Engineering, one of the country's largest engineering firms who does a lot of work here in Sacramento, did a challenge and went out to Joseph Bonheim Elementary, which focuses on ag, and you can't have ag and produce without water. And they talked about how, what water means to them, and then all of the things that go into providing quality water, and what kind of engineers we need to provide quality water. And we know that very much here in our own city. And so, I'd like to bring it over to, pass it over to our Felicia James from Corolo Engineering, and our principal and our students here, to talk a little bit about the contest. And then, I'll also, first, before we do that, I want to ask a big round of applause for, we have two of our five winners of the What Water Means to Me contest recipients here. And the first is second grader Samantha Johns. Let's give her a big round of applause.[225.23][225.23](APPLAUSE). And then, the second is Marcela Mendoza from third grade. Give her a big round of applause.[234.62][234.62](APPLAUSE). Watching at home over in the Colonial Manor neighborhood, Colonial Village neighborhood, from fourth grade, we have both Choslin Nalurma, Ronnie Abiet, and then also from fifth grade, Joseph Montelongo. And they had, they did a number of different art projects and learned about it, but I liked a couple of them, some of them here, like What We Need Water, and another one here, Water Saves Lives, Water Is Life. And then, one of my favorites, What Does Water Mean to Me, Carrying Love and Health. And so, it was great to see some of these arts, artist projects that came about. But here are our winners here today, and I'll pass it over to Felicia and to talk about the recipients and their winning projects.
Thank you very much. Very glad to be here tonight, and wanted to say we're very proud to be a part of Sacramento since 1987, and really appreciate the hard work that you're doing in going through the budget decisions. I know they're challenging, but we appreciate what you're doing for the future of these young people here today. At Corolo, water is our focus, our business and our passion, and we are enthusiastic about sharing this passion with young people, myself and my coworkers. In this year's State of the Water Industry Report by the American Water Works Association, workforce retirement ranked among the top five issues for large utilities like the city of Sacramento. This means that our water industry needs many young people to be excited about the many career opportunities open to them for working wonders with water. Last month, in celebration of Drinking Water Week, as you just explained, the scholars at New Joseph Bonheim Community Charter School illustrated for us what water means to them. And we enjoyed doing some on-the-fly math calculations to determine, for example, how many bathtubs of water it is used to produce a hamburger, about 16, or a pair of shoes, about 53. We were absolutely thrilled by their creative responses. So, I'm proud to present to you the posters that were selected. You've seen a few of them here already, and I was going to show you the other, the other three. So, thank you again very much for your time.
Great. And then, if we can have Ms. Mendoza and Ms. Johnson give us a little explanation of what they thought about Water Week.
All right. Come up to the speaker.
And I think we've got a microphone for folks my height as well, so.
Water means everything to me because it keeps us alive. Without water, there wouldn't be anything but dust.
That's true. And Ms. Mendoza?
What water means to me is that if we didn't have water, that means you will not be dehydrated.
That's great. Well, good. Well, very, well, thank you very much. Here are our winners. Let's give them a big round of applause, because we need more civil engineers that are focused on water. So, I'm actually going to ask not only our mayor, but the Chair of the Water Committee for the City Council to come down with me and present these resolutions. Give this one here. We'll do a quick photo here in front of the podium. Ms. Mendoza?
Ms. Mendoza, I'm General Steinberg. Thank you so much. Proud of you guys. Really am proud of you.
There you go.
Thank you. Nice to see you.
And then, Mr. Mayor, this is Ms. Mendoza.
We said hi earlier, so I'm going to give this to you.
We'll give the resolution, let's see, to Corolo here, for their efforts here. And then, we'll put you guys, how about taking two steps forward, and then we'll take the tall folks in the back. Means you and I, Mayor.[467.12][467.12](LAUGHTER).
Another big round of applause for our future civil engineers.[474.12][474.12](APPLAUSE).
Ah, that's great. Okay. The second presentation is mine. I have the honor of representing Ju Young An on receiving the George H. Clark Scholarship. She will receive a total of $20,000, $5,000 a year for four years. This is a scholarship in partnership with the Sacramento City Unified School District. The mayor has the privilege of awarding this scholarship to an outstanding student, and has had this privilege for approximately four years, my predecessors and I. Each year, a high-achieving student is recommended from each of the SacCity Unified Comprehensive High Schools to participate in the application process. Students are evaluated on grade point average, on school activities, on community involvement, on extracurricular activities, letters of recommendation, personal challenges, and the scholarship is for a commitment to attend a four-year university. Each year, the scholarship recipient has successfully enrolled in a college of choice and continued to meet the academic qualifications. And so, we have Elizabeth Vigil here, who is the school principal. Ms. Vigil, come on up. I'd like you to make a more detailed proposal. And we have Ju Young's dad, mom, brother, and sister here, all proud family members. Welcome to you, and thank you, by the way, for waiting as long as you waited in the audience. I saw you here earlier.
Absolutely. And you kind of described the scholarship. I know that George H. Clark was the city manager from 1900 to 1903. So, this scholarship is in his honor. Ju Young, Gloria is her nickname, is, she has the highest grade point average at Rosemont High School. She is truly our outstanding senior, and she represents the best across Sacramento City Unified School District. So, it's just, I'm very, very honored to be able to present her with this scholarship. No one is more deserving, and we're very, very proud of her.
Fabulous.[638.12][638.12](APPLAUSE). Well, we'd like to hear from you, if you don't mind, and then we'd like to take, I'd like, love to take a picture with you, if that's okay.
I am expecting to-
Alice, where you're going to school, and your ambition, and when you're going to run for city council.
So, I'm a senior at Rosemont High School, and I am really honored to receive this scholarship, because I, my family is in need of financial aid. Like, I'm, oh, I'm going to Berkeley this fall.
Go Bears!
As a physics major-
Go Bears!
Go Bears! I'm really thankful, because I was really in need of looking for financial aid, and I was really grateful to receive this scholarship. $5,000, that's a lot, and I am going to work really, really hard to try to keep this privilege of receiving $5,000 for the next four years at Berkeley. And my vision for the future, I want to become a doctor, specifically an eye doctor, ophthalmologist. And a bigger vision of mine is, I'm really interested in helping, like, the developing countries around the world, because I was involved in this community service, where I went to a refugee family's house every Saturday, and I was touring them. And my family was from Congo and Africa, and just watching them grow as day by day, and the fact that they didn't have that opportunity to learn back in Congo, it just broke my heart. So, I want to dedicate my life in improving education system in third-world countries and developing countries, and also become a doctor. So, yeah.
Oh, my God.
Thank you.
Just fabulous. We're so proud of you, and, okay. So, you can't promise the following, but will you consider, after you're all done with all of it, coming back to Sacramento?
Absolutely, because my dad is actually a pastor here at one of the Korean churches. So, he will be here for a very long time, and I'll be more than happy to visit Sacramento.
Okay. Fabulous. That's great. Congratulations. I'm going to go down and take a picture.
Ladies and gentlemen, the family of this incredible Berkeley-to-be-student. Give them a round of applause.[843.62][843.62](APPLAUSE).
Surprised I didn't hear a Go Bears or something out there. Another big round of applause for our recipient.
Thank you, guys. I wish you all the best, really. If you ever want to do internship.
Okay, we're going to move on consent calendar here while we're finishing with, it's been a motion to approve consent, is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Chenier. Any discussion? Are there any members of the public wishing to speak? If there's no members of the public wishing to speak, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Consent passes. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item on the agenda. If the clerk could please read.
Item number 16 is a public hearing, Village Garden Landscape Maintenance District Number 2011-01.
All right. Good evening. I do want to thank all our city staff for sticking around this late and with the late start. I think we have a short presentation here.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Arwen Wa with the Finance Department. The item before you today is the Village Garden Landscaping Maintenance District, which provides funding for maintenance and repair of masonry walls, landscaping, and irrigation systems for the areas within the North Point and North Norwood subdivisions. For Village Garden, the proposed fiscal year 1920 annual assessment of $119.16 per residential unit per year is a 4% increase from last year. Staff recommendation is to open the public hearing, and upon conclusion, adopt the resolution in the packet, and that will confirm the assessment diagram, and levy the assessment for fiscal year 2019-20 for the Village Garden Maintenance Districts. If I'm available, if you have any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? No members of the public wishing to speak? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Item number 18. We have to take individual motions on those.
Yeah, no, did she present on that?
Yes, she did.
I would move to open and close the public hearing and approve the item.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded by Councilmember Hanson, and seconded by Councilmember Harris. Are there any members of the public signed up to speak? No members of the public signed up to speak? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item.
On item 19, to open and close the public hearing and approve the item.
Do we need a, Madam Clerk, or Madam, do we need a presentation on that at all?
We have nothing to read in the record.
Okay, perfect. Then, there's been a motion by Councilmember Hanson, and seconded by Councilmember Harris. Any members of the public signed up to speak? No members of the public signed up to speak? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Next item.
On item 19, to open and close the public hearing and approve the item.
Do we need a, Madam Clerk, or Madam, do we need a presentation on that at all?
We have nothing to read in the record.
Okay, perfect. Then, there's been a motion by Councilmember Hanson, and seconded by Councilmember Harris. Any members of the public signed up to speak? No members of the public signed up to speak? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, item passes. We're moving on to item number 20.
Allen, are you okay with the alley vacation?
I am.
Okay, I moved to waive staff presentation, open, close the public hearing, and approve item 20.
There's been a request to waive staff presentation, it's been moved to open and close the public hearing, it's been seconded by Councilmember Chenier. Is there any, any members of the public signed up to speak?
No.
There are no members of the public signed up to speak? Is there any discussion? Seeing, do we need to read anything into the record? There's nothing that needs to be read into the record, and there's no discussion from the members. Then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you very much. Okay.
On item 21, I would move to waive staff presentation unless you have to read anything into the record. Madam Clerk?
We do have one speaker.
We do have one speaker, so I'm going to ask staff to, if they can make their presentation, and then we'll bring up the speaker.
I think we waive the presentation.
Can we waive the presentation? Is there an objection from waiving the presentation? Okay, we'll go ahead and waive the presentation. Is there a motion?
Motion, so moved, open, close.
Been moved and seconded by Councilmember Hanson and Harris, who's a member of the-
Close the public hearing after the public speaker.
And then, there is, well, we're going to move to open the public hearing, it's been seconded, and Madam Clerk, if you could please read the speaker.
Speaker is Jim Bob Kaufman.
Good evening, Mr. Kaufman.
Good evening, and thank you for my, taking the opportunity, giving me the opportunity just to make a few brief comments. The guidelines that are before you are an excellent exercise in collaboration between the private sector and city staff, and I, as a practicing architect in Sacramento, and other members of the architect community are really pleased that you will take a look at this and hopefully pass this item. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaufman, and we will thank the staff. Councilmember Harris.
Mr. Kaufman, thank you for your comments. I agree with you completely. This is a great package, and we're happy to move it forward.
Close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing. Item's been moved and seconded.
Yep, correct. Thank you very much for closing the public hearing. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Seeing none? Measure passes. Onto the discussion calendar. If the clerk could please call the next item.
Item 22 is approval of one-year action plan allocation process for Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency administered to United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD-funded programs.
Good evening, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. I'm certainly more than happy to shorten my presentation, if that is the will of the council.
Let's go ahead and hear the one-action plan, and then we'll move on to the next item.
Okay, but I'll maybe shorten it a little bit. So, tonight is a presentation of the proposed one-year action plan allocation process for federal programs. Oops, sorry. Just a high-level overview of the consolidated plan and the action plan. The consolidated plan is the document which assesses fair housing and establishes fair housing goals and objectives for a variety of funding sources, specifically the Community Development Block Grant, or CDVG, Home, which is for affordable housing, Emergency Solutions Grant, which is for homeless services, and housing opportunities for persons with AIDS. So, this provides the overall goals and objectives that are set by a community process, including you as elected officials, city staff, as well as the community. On an annual basis, we prepare a one-year action plan, which funds, uses those funding sources to provide funding to public facilities, as well as variety of service programs. All of these go to providing affordable housing, improving our infrastructure and public facilities, as well as providing public services. All of these help to create ladders of opportunity for our low and moderate-income residents in the city. Briefly, currently, the one-year action plan begins in the springtime. SHRA staff meets with city staff, as well as discussions with council members, and the community, and identifies, begins to identify projects. We take about three months to review those, to prioritize, make sure that they are eligible, that they're meeting a need, and that they can be delivered in a timely fashion. This ends up before you for action in October, for submission to HUD by November 15th. We are proposing to align this more effectively with your CIP and budget process. This was a request from the mayor when we came before you in November. The end result will be a much more transparent process, because we'll have specific points in time for input, as well as, as I said, we are going to integrate more fully with the capital improvement program, and really, to the ends of better alignment of our federal and local resources to provide housing, economic development, and community development to our low and moderate-income neighborhoods. And then, quickly go over what the proposed process will be. That begins in December, which more fully aligns with your CIP and budget process. This will begin with our executive director requesting that the city begin the process and convening. In January, we will come before you with a workshop to talk about what priorities are for that year. We can also provide information about what projects were in the queue. For example, we often fund projects design in one year, and two to three years later, we'll come along with construction funds. So, it's important for you to understand what has already been in the queue. So, we'll have, obviously, we'll have input from the council on potential projects, and then, the city staff will begin to meet, identify those projects, and work through, making sure they're eligible, et cetera, through March. Then, we will have a community meeting with those, presenting what the draft list of projects and priorities are at our Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission meeting. Then, that same, similar report will be for you for your input in April. Once the list of sort of projects for infrastructure and community facilities is drafted, we'll begin on the other components of the public service. And staff will again meet with city staff through May, June, with a full action plan budget by August. Then, we will go through the approval process in September at our commission, and then here in October at council, for submission to HUD by November. All right. I'll go back one. So, that concludes my presentation. Now, to be, when will this be implemented? Because we are late in the year, this will be done for the 2021 action plan, all right? So, it'll be a little bit. So, therefore, today, if there are any recommendations from council about CDVG projects, we can integrate that into the process we are currently in.
Well, thank you for your presentation. I know my office will follow up with you specifically about any CBD projects or issues. We do want to thank your work that you've been doing in the Glen Elder community on pedestrian crossings issues, and I'm sure individual staff, council members will follow up with you as well. If there's no council member signed up to speak on this item, and this is for discussion only, so we can move on to the next item. Oh, is there a motion here?
Yes.
It's been moved by Councilmember Hanson, and seconded by Councilmember Harris. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. Thank you very much, Sally. And if the clerk could please read the next item.
Item number 23 is multi-family financing and mortgage-revenue bond policies workshop.
Good evening. Christine Waggett with Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency, and I know we're going to get the PowerPoint up. Just a moment here. Today, I'll be presenting the proposed changes to our multi-family lending and mortgage-revenue bond policies. The purpose of the policies is to provide SHRA's development partners with a clear understanding of how to obtain gap financing and bond issuances. The policies were last updated in 2009. To date, we've held three stakeholder meetings and a workshop with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. The following slides summarize the recommended changes, and after receiving direction from you today, we'll again consult our stakeholders and commission before returning for final approval. So, SHRA currently administers the following funding sources for affordable housing. Housing trust funds and mixed-income housing fees, and in 2018, those generated about $2.5 million. State programs include applying for mortgage-revenue bonds, and No Place Like Home, which SHRA partners with the county to apply for. Federal programs include CDVG and Home, which come directly from HUD. One of the most important sections of the policy is the funding priorities. These policies provide a mechanism for determining which projects receive funding when multiple applications are received. SHRA works in concert with other funding programs, such as the low-income housing tax credits, and we expect developers to leverage other resources to the maximum extent possible. The priorities of our current policies are preservation of affordable housing. These are currently regulated affordable housing units that are at risk of being lost, primarily due to rents no longer being restricted as their compliance period is over. Number two is recapitalization of affordable housing. While the compliance period may not be over, the affordable housing units require additional resources for rehabilitation. Number three currently is inclusionary housing, which was important when there was an requirement for new housing developments to build 15% of-
The purpose of the policies is to provide SHRA's development partners with a clear understanding of how to obtain gap financing and bond issuances. The policies were last updated in 2009. To date, we've held three stakeholder meetings and a workshop with the Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission. The following slides summarize the recommended changes, and after receiving direction from you today, we'll again consult our stakeholders and commission before returning for final approval. So SHRA currently administers the following funding sources for affordable housing: housing trust funds and mixed-income housing fees. And in 2018, those generated about $2.5 million. State programs include applying for mortgage revenue bonds and No Place Like Home, which SHRA partners with the county to apply for. Federal programs include CDBG and Home, which come directly from HUD. Sorry. One of the most important sections of the policy is the funding priorities. These policies provide a mechanism for determining which projects receive funding when multiple applications are received. SHRA works in concert with other funding programs, such as the low-income housing tax credits, and we expect developers to leverage other resources to the maximum extent possible. The priorities of our current policies are preservation of affordable housing. These are currently regulated affordable housing units that are at risk of being lost, primarily due to rents no longer being restricted as their compliance period is over. Number two is recapitalization of affordable housing. While the compliance period may not be over, the affordable housing units require additional resources for rehabilitation. Number three currently is inclusionary housing, which was important when there was an requirement for new housing developments to build 15% affordable. And four is the rehabilitation of market-rate housing into affordable housing and construction of new affordable housing. After the workshops with our stakeholders, staff is recommending the following priorities. Number one remains preservation of affordable housing. Number two is new construction and conversion of non-residential buildings into affordable housing. These are also prioritized in the following order. First is permanent supportive housing and homeless. Second would be workforce housing. And the third with our stakeholders was number three, was veterans' housing, but we've come to realize that that, most veterans' housing will probably fall under that permanent supportive housing category. Number three would be recapitalization of affordable housing, and number four would be rehabilitation of market-rate units into affordable housing. SHRA staff performed extensive research on our peer agencies throughout California, and that research led us to recommend reducing our annual bond monitoring fees by 2.5 basis points. Also in line with our peer jurisdictions, we're recommending the adoption of a per-unit fee for units that receive local gap financing due to the increased number of regulatory requirements we're, we are monitoring, particularly in the home program. We are also suggesting a limit to the fees for which, which will have cost savings for our development partners.
Do you know, Christine, what the dollar amount might be on that? Do you have an estimate?
The limit, $25,000 annually.
No, no, no. The reduction in your revenue or the money staying in the developer's hands?
Well, most of the projects we had financed did not exceed that $25,000 annually. There are one or two larger bond issuers that did. So, but as we've seen projects get larger and larger, and bonds, you know, cost more, and bond issuers get higher, there will be a reduction of our revenue, but we feel that with this cap, that we can perform the requirement tasks that we need to do.
Oh, I'm sorry. So going from 15 basis points down to 12 and a half?
Oh, that, I'm sorry. I thought you meant the annual cap, what it's capped at.
Like, what's a, what's your, what's the difference in revenues for the agency based on this? You have an estimate?
Um, I'm trying to, we did this so long ago. I don't think, it's not gonna be significant, but there will be, I can, I'm sorry. I could get back to you. I literally can't remember. I know we performed it, but it was about a year ago, so I'd have to get back to you on that.
Maybe ask a different way. I'm sorry. Like, what's, what are you hoping to achieve by doing this?
Make it more affordable for developers, so that our fees are reduced, so therefore the cost of the entire project is reduced.
Okay. So you'll get us a?
Sure.
Thank you.
Let's see. So currently, our policies require a minimum of 20% of a project's units to be restricted to 50% of area meeting income, or AMI, which is considered very low income. Based on stakeholder feedback, we are proposing that a minimum of 15% of the units be restricted to 50% AMI, and at least 5% of the units be restricted to 30% AMI, which is considered low income. So we'll be increasing the number of low income required. Extremely low income, all right. The revised policies also reflect the new application schedule we implemented a few years ago, with fewer funds to award. SHRA now accepts applications only twice a year to align with the state tax credit allocation committee schedule. There is a third optional round if funding is available, and we are gonna publish those funds available at least 30 days ahead of time on our website. So the new policies also clarify that when SHRA is providing financing to a project, we will hold the TEFRA, which is the public hearing approving the issuance of the mortgage revenue bonds at the city council meeting. This has long been our practice, but now reflected in our policies. We also found this is in line with other large issuers, at local entities, let's say, you know, San Diego, San Jose, Los Angeles. New to our policies is language regarding communication with governing bodies. SHRA strives to make project selection and underwriting transparent, fair, and unbiased process. Attempts to influence underwriting standards jeopardize that impartiality. Therefore, once an application has been submitted, and the applicant should not attempt to influence the process, and must coordinate with staff prior to contacting members of the governing bodies. This does not mean the developer cannot contact governing body members before the application is submitted, or after our review is complete, but while our review is underway, it's important that we be able to evaluate all projects using the same standards. We also proposing a few technical changes to our policies. For example, we're updating underwriting requirements, clarifying how much you can charge for pets and parking. For property management requiring, requirements, we're talking about security cameras and patrols. Minimum construction standards will be updated, and we wanna make sure, for example, playground equipments are included in family projects. We wanna make sure relocation plans are prepared by a relocation consultant. And for smoke-free requirements, we're recommending that they increase from our current 50% requirement to 100% of a development's units. So we'll be 100% smoke-free. So that concludes my presentation. Again, after receiving your feedback today, we will make updates to the policies and host additional stakeholder meetings prior to finally seeking your approval.
Great. Well, thank you for your presentation. We do have members of the council signed up to speak, and we have no members of the public signed up to speak. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Christine, I have three comments. So, the first is, when this comes back to council, I'd like to see the full policy in red line.
Absolutely.
This synopsis, I don't think is, is, you know, these policies are complex, and I need to see more information. The second comment is, as far as the TEFRA hearings, I really believe that developers should be able to seek bonding from CalHFA as well as, as, well as SHRA. And, and I don't think that that's appropriate change in the policy. So I'd like to, you know, when it comes back for a vote, that would be the comment. The third is that trying to restrict communication between developers and the city council, or the county board of supervisors, is not gonna get any traction with me. I doubt it would get any traction with any other elected member to try to restrict communication between myself and developer. It's already come up with McCormick Baron Salazar, you know? I mean, a very important developer on a very important project. So, I would say that that should also be removed from the policy changes.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Hanson.
I'd echo those comments. I, I think that a gag order here in these policies is wrong, and I, I think that has to come out if it's coming back to us. We need to have open and honest communication about projects. I also feel like, when this comes back to us, there has to be some prioritization of two things. One, the ability of a project to move within 12 months. Sometimes our, our funding stacks have lingered for so long, the project costs go up so much, then they need huge gap financing, and we need to get to the place where we're moving projects as quickly as possible and prioritizing those are shovel-ready. Secondly, that, that comes back to this, this is the first time in 10 years this has been in front of us, although, to your credit, you tried to bring it last year, and it got bunted, and you tried to bring it last week, and, so anyway, I, I get that. But, we've had this conversation, preservation in 2009 was prioritized. We still had redevelopment. I still think preservation is important, but with a housing shortage, I think we need to elevate production to at least be on par, if not slightly more important than preservation. How you award points to applications is really important. That doesn't mean that preservation is not going to be funded, but we have delivered a message repeatedly to our staff, and I think to you, that we need to see new units built. And, that's because we're getting hammered by people who say they can't find a home that they can afford, that's because we're not building enough, and it doesn't feel that we're being responsive in our policies to the existential crisis that a lot of people feel about housing affordability, and affordable housing, right? And it's the whole, you know, we had a big debate last week and the weeks before about bonding for housing, and how to do gap financing, now SB 2 is coming, and we wanna pull down money. So I think this policy should also reflect how we leverage funds, and, and how a project scores, to some extent, should reflect on how well they've leveraged other funding sources. I, I don't know exactly how to capture that, but maybe between our economic development staff and you, you can figure out a metric for that. But that's, I see you taking a deep breath, because that sounds complicated maybe, or something. But, I also feel like I need to take a deep breath, but not because of this, mostly because of our day. But I think the work of the agency is so fundamental and so critical to the public of Sacramento. This is a huge piece. You do a lot with very few resources, and as much as it's painful to say, we need to stretch those resources even further and be smarter with them. You probably never watched DuckTales, the cartoon? How many, any of you watch DuckTales?
Yeah.
Do you remember how Scrooge McDuck made his money? Okay. He invented a shoe shine machine, machine so he could shine more shoes faster, and he called it working smarter, not harder. And you do that as an agency really well, and what I'm challenging you to do is look at this policy as a way to work smarter with us and those other new resources, to draw them down, and to move these projects from concept into reality. And that may hurt some people's feelings, because they have a great idea, but it's not yet gonna happen, or they can't close the deal. But we're losing a lot of other opportunities as a cost of that. So, those are my feedback. That's my feedback.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Really quickly, I just wanna support the three points that Mr. Harris made. I think those are all important, and would love to see those changes when it comes back.
Thank you. And as far as my comments, he did it first. I also wanna echo Councilmember Harris's comments. I do think it's a slippery slope when we start putting restrictions on, on the, anyone from the public's ability to communicate with electeds. To me, I almost see it as, you know, working on a, a, an issue with our Little League, on the lease agreement with the city, and having them not be able to communicate with us on something like that. It's not apples and oranges, but I think it's, it just becomes a slippery slope when we start moving in that direction. The other issue is also, I, I don't agree at all with the restriction on the TEFRA. In fact, I had a conversation with CalHFA, and, and, and we would put ourselves in a critical position of not being able and competitive into getting other resources of dollars, not just CalHFA, but anything else that, that's coming up in the administration right now. So, as, as, as far as feedback for when it comes back, I'm also in, in line with Councilmember Harris about that, this issue, and would like to seek those changes. Are there any other comments? Oh, Councilmember Jennings, yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Maybe I missed it, I just wanna make sure I understand the goal of the quote-unquote gag order, or restriction, talking to electeds. Maybe you can talk about the issue that you've had with that? Speak to that.
Maybe LaShelle would like to, but I just wanna make it clear on that, that we're, we're not restricting, maybe I wasn't clear. We're saying before an application is submitted, after an application is submitted, and while an application is being reviewed, we want them to coordinate with us, with communicating with you. We find that sometimes getting together, everyone in the same room is helpful. It's not saying, I just wanna make it clear that this isn't saying they could never talk to you, we just wanna coordinate with them, because we're going through our review process. And sometimes, it gets very confusing during that time when we're reviewing it, but LaShelle, do you wanna add?
Yes. What Christine is really referring to is, there is no gag order. We're not prohibiting anyone from talking to electeds. What we're trying to do is to increase the communication, so that we can all sit down at the table together and walk through what the issues are. Sometimes, especially when the project is under review, there just may not be full information that's provided to the council member, and so we're just asking that when that process is under review, and they wanna talk, that we be a part of that conversation, so that it's very clear from your perspective, our perspective, and from the developers, and we're all working together and on the same page. So that's what I really wanna make sure is clear. It's not a gag order.
And I, I guess I would like to say that that changed through our stakeholder process. So this is a reflection of what we heard from stakeholders, that said they wanted to make sure that they could communicate, and we said, we agree, we're gonna change to what we originally proposed, which was more like, well, no communication too, how about we all communicate? So this is a change from what our stakeholders originally heard.
So I, so I think, just based on the way it was read by some council members, maybe the, it needs to be reworded, so that it's clearer as far as what we're trying to accomplish. So that would be my recommendation. And then, as it relates to SHRA versus the state, there are some benefits to it being with SHRA as opposed to the state, and could you speak to those benefits?
Yes. Essentially, if, if there is money from the city that's in the deal, and we are the issuer, and we do the TEFRA, then we actually have the leverage to deal with that developer over time with the project. So that's our hammer. It's because we are the issuer, then we can go in and say, you're not managing this property, this property accordingly. And we can, we can require them to change property managers, to add the social services, any of the things that we see with a project that is not going the way that we intended, because we are the issuer and we have done the TEFRA. If CalHFA is the issuer, then you have to deal with the state. It is not us. I don't have that type of hammer to go in and say that. It would be the state of California as the issuer to then go in and say, this is how we should address this issue of property management, which, this has come up. This is not something that's new. This has come up where we've had projects that have gone south. And so, in this particular scenario, if you abdicate that to the state of California, then you don't have the authority over the state to administer it the way that you do over SHRA, because we work on your behalf. The state works on the state's behalf. So, that's the difference between the two.
And I would just add that, I just wanna make sure clear, every, the TEFRA, what the TEFRA is, is a public hearing. So, when SHRA holds a public hearing, we put it on the city council's agenda. A staff person stands up here and tells you about the project, the affordable housing project. And, and I'm not trying to, this is not to despair the state, but there's literally, we put, we, we know sit in the public paper, we, we do lots of different things. The state has their, their TEFRA meeting in a conference room on, on Capitol Mall. But, I just wanna make sure you understand that we're trying to make it a public hearing in front of all of you versus the state, which is a little different.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hanson, then I have the mayor next. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. First, I think, Rick, you made some very good points, Councilmember Jennings, on the communication piece. I read it as a gag order, because, hold on one second, Christine, it says the applicant must not attempt to influence the process and must coordinate with staff prior to contacting. And in my experience, when you all are in the same room, we don't always hear different versions of things, or the honest feedback, like sometimes I talk to you, and you give me, what, what is your take? And sometimes I need to hear the honest take of the other applicant, or the other, the applicant. And that's why I read it as the must-not and, and must. If it said should, I'd feel really good about that. And I, I don't expect you, I don't, I'm not trying to wordsmith right now, I'm just giving you an example of what, how I read it, and I think would be helpful. The second thing is, the TEFRA hearing is almost always pro forma here. It, it's, in this chamber, the ones I've been through, it's like the public hearing calendar we had tonight. Okay, okay, let's move on. It's not ever been controversial, and so I don't necessarily think that is what I care about, but if you're doing some form of funding to a project, you can always put a monitoring requirement in and maintain some regulatory perspective. I, I don't know if that's the reason not to, I, I get that there's an issuance issue, because we make money off of who does the issuance as well, and I think that's legitimate. But I think that's worth talking about, rather than the TEFRA hearing and how we monitor.
Good. Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. Let's move to Mayor Steinberg.
Thank you. So I'm trying to just understand whether or not we need an absolute policy on this TEFRA SHRA issue, or whether or not it can be a case-by-case analysis, with SHRA essentially helping to direct what's best? Because, isn't it, on a case-by-case basis, a cost-benefit analysis? In other words, we want as much control as possible, I get that part of it. But on the other hand, what if the state issuance is for some other reason advantageous to the city? What if it's better rate? What if it is, what if it comes with bells and whistles that we can offer? I mean, the state's now getting, of course, into the housing business in a way that they, that they haven't before, so that's, I just wonder why we need an absolute policy? That, that, that's the part that really bothered me a little bit about the, the proposal.
We do have language in our current policies that talk about holding the TEFRA hearing here in Sacramento, in front of the city council here in Sacramento. And it, our policies are supposed to tell our developer partners upfront what we prefer, and that's been the policy to prefer. Certainly, they are just policies, and certainly we have been known to, you know, bring forward policy exceptions before. So, these are just sort of our attempt to tell developers upfront, we would prefer to hold the TEFRA hearing and be the bond issuer.
Well, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying. Which is, we can tell the developer- Well, that's, that's kind of what I'm saying, which is, we can tell the developers that it is our preference. But that doesn't necessarily preclude the state if, for some reason, it's advantageous to the project itself. For whatever, whatever reason, especially as the state is getting a little deeper into making housing and affordable housing a priority. So why don't we say it that way? I'm just asking. Well, they, oh, go ahead. I'm just, I'm inquiring because I, I don't want to provide direction when I'm not, when I'm not exactly sure if what I'm asking is consistent with what you're recommending.
Right. If you kind of look at our history, this has been our practice. This is not a new thing. So this is clarifying the practice that we have had for as long as I can recall.
So why do you need, why do you need the rigid policy if it's been your practice?
Well, we need to make sure that it's very clear to our developers, and that's something that we, they have called for. And so that's why we're putting it into the policy. But I think more importantly is the issue in terms of whether you want to have local control or whether you want to have state control. I mean, if you look at the housing complexes that we have had to deal with, even in, in Natomas, there's 11 complexes there. And the fact that we are the issuer is what brought them all to the table so that they could start working collectively together on a number of issues that were plaguing that particular neighborhood. If you abdicate that to the state, then we just don't have that opportunity to do those types of things.
But no one's talking about, that's my point, no one's talking about abdicating it to the state. In other words, the practice is, is the preferred practice, but it allows for an exception where appropriate. You're now looking to make the policy absolute. And I'm not absolutely convinced that that's necessary when, when the practice is as you, as you prefer it for the right reasons, the local control, et cetera. But I just, I don't know why we, why, why you have to lock yourselves in and why we have to lock ourselves in with an absolute policy as opposed to a preference, which is the current practice.
Well, I think this is a discussion, discuss and comment, and I think you've heard-
Oh, we're not voting tonight.
No, no. I think you've heard five comments here on this dais.
Well, in that case.
Yeah. You've heard five comments on this dais about those issues. Particularly, I mean, I will say that my conversation with Cal HFA and at least was that if we wanted more control or wanted checks or whatever, we could include those in the terms as part of the term sheet. So in my opinion, I just think deleting number four, when it comes back to council for a vote, would be the best approach. You know, frankly, I agree with, with the mayor on this, is that if the state is starting to do things like expedited, you know, issues or whatnot for working with them, then I think we should do that. Historically, I think the, always we want to fight for local control as a city, but I feel also local control has gotten into this housing problem in the first place from a, from a bigger scale. So we have to be more flexible in figuring out how do we use every angle we can to accomplish more of the, more revenue and access to these funds. So seeing there's no more members signed up to speak on this, I think you've heard comments and for this item. Thank you very much. All right, Madam Clerk, I think we're down to council comments. AB 123 reports and any commission appointments? There are no commission appointments. There, we have one council member signed up to speak, two. We'll go, we'll start with Councilmember Harris.
Well, speaking of the Two Rivers Trail, there will be a scoping meeting this Saturday, June 8th, 10:00 a.m. at the Fremont Presbyterian Church, Ferguson Hall. That's at 5770 Carlson Drive. Pops in the Park returns this Saturday, June 8th, with Dana Murray and Zen Voodoo at Bertha Anshel Park. That's 160 45th Street. The Beer Garden and Food Vendors will be open at 5:00. The band starts playing at 6:00. Our first Pops concert was really well attended. We had over 3,000 people in attendance. It was a lot of fun. And then next Wednesday, June 12th, there will be a general plan update community meeting at Natomas High School, 3301 Fong Ranch Road, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. This Friday, at DUS, we encourage all of you to grab a blanket, a pillow, and a lawn chair and join us as we watch the incredible Mary Poppins Returns. And if you have not seen that, you're in for a treat. It's going to be under the stars. It's going to be at the newly named Willie Caston Park, formerly Mesa Grande Park. Say it again?
Incredible, Steve?
No.
Oh, Mary Poppins.
Mary Poppins Returns.
Yes, the new movie.
Under the, the new one. That's right.
It's so good.
So, it's so good. I'd like to hear that. That's good. So you can contact my office for more details, but we're going to have a great party out there under the stars with drinks and popcorn and all kinds of things. So we encourage you to bring the whole family out for this family friendly event. And then on July the 4th, and I'm now calling all of my elected officials who need a place to go for July the 4th, to join us in D7 Unity in the Community. It's going to be a parade and festival. It'll take place on 4th of July. And if you're interested in having a float, a booth, a classic car riding in the parade, contact our office, contact me. We'll make sure to take care of you. And it's going to be a fun day of the parade going up Winbridge and then going into the park for a family friendly event again with food and fun for kids and all kinds of games for kids. So come on out for a great time on July the 4th.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Ashby.
Sorry, this is a quick one, and I'm really just stating it for the record. I think you all already know, and our staff's been working on it. But I believe June 25th, the Passaverte school water request should be coming to city council. I just want to make sure we confirm the date and get that on the calendar. Chris, if you could follow up and make sure that that's the right date. I know our staff's been working on it and they were working through, actually, the city attorney's office. So she may also need to confer with you about what date they're prepared to come back. But I know my colleagues are getting a lot of letters and notes from the members of that community, and they are awaiting a response from us. So as soon as we have that, we need to bring it forward. So if you could let me know if that's going to be the 25th, I would really appreciate it. Yeah? Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman, Mayor Protip Ashby. Councilmember Chenier.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Just a couple of events. This Friday night, we're doing food trucks at Belle Coolidge Park. On Saturday, we're doing District 5 Day at the Oak Park Farmers Market at 9 o'clock. And I believe we'll have a lot of, a lot of stuff going on there. And then also, there's a three-on-three basketball tournament at Jack Davis Park. I was thinking about lacing them up, and then I got, then I got smart and decided not to. And then Paradise Baptist Church has their community day at McClatchy Park on Sunday from 11 to 3. Also, we have the Pride Parade going on this Sunday as well. So for those of you who are doing it, we'll see you there.
Thank, thank you very much. And District 6 events here. We have the Granite Regional Skate Park open, reopening this Saturday, June 15th. We're going to have a contest for all the skaters out there from 10:30 to noon. That's June 15th, with the new improvements. Also, we have the College Greens Food Truck, and we're going to have some office hours there. We can talk to neighbors. On June 20th, at 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Glen Brook Park. So come out and enjoy the fun. And the Tahoe Park Food Truck, obviously, every 4th Friday in Tahoe Park, June 28th, from 5:00 to 9:00 at Tahoe Park. And then the College Glen Little League and the National Night Out, the College Glen Neighborhood Association National Night Out, it's going to be Friday, June 28th, at 7:00 p.m. at Thomas Jefferson School Field. So we hope you guys can come out and enjoy the fun. We do, now we're moving on to comments from the public. Not on the agenda? Or do we?
Do you want to do the adjournment?
Okay, we're going to do the adjournment memory first here.
Councilmember Hanson. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I just thought I'd do the adjournment memory first. Saturday, we celebrated the life of Coral Henning, who is a very well-known March School New Era Park resident, but spent 25 years as the executive director of the Sacramento County Law Library. I met her in 2003 in, of all things, the City Planning Academy. And she made a huge impression on people. She was a championship pickler. Apparently, that was a big part of her life as part of the Slow Food Movement, involved in the Food Literacy Center, and also part of the Sacramento Mountaineers. She is survived by her husband Dwan and a beautiful family and will be sorely missed.
Great. We will be adjourning in memory this evening of, for Coral, Coral Henning. We are going to move into comments from the public, items not on the agenda.
Thank you. I have three speakers this evening. The first is Jeffrey Tardagia, then Noah Davidson, then Ron Elmsley.
Jeff Tardagia. And I'm glad to see Steve and Angela and, should we say Jeff, because I've read your articles. They've been interesting to see in The Insider. What I'm here principally is to discuss, indeed, with Steve Henson, is three things are going on that are critical that have not been addressed by this district and city hall. One is, right now, C3 Project for the Convention Center has removed the bus shelter at 14th and L. Street.
Jeff, it's being relocated to half a block up.
Well, look at where that, look at where that relocation is and how accessible it is shelter-wise and bus-wise and for, should we say, parking. Because both there and at 11th Street, you have huge parking problems. Right now, you've had the 30-
Do you park to ride the bus? Do you park to ride the bus? Is that what you're saying, Jeff?
It's too hard to get in there with the construction, and there's too many parking spaces to try and pull the bus in at both 14th and 11th Street.
Okay, well, it's not going to make sure that they-
So you're having the buses that are sitting on the street, so you have no access. And that is the principal location that you're moving to get people north.
The parking spots are supposed to come out. I'll make sure that happens.
The other thing is, it's 7th and J. Street. You put up a wrong, so we don't make a right turn onto J. Street. It's already getting brushed in less than a week being put up because of the way it got placed and put up there at that location. But those two principal things are affecting riders. And I just had a person that was not greatly capable to do it. I started at 9:00 this morning with the Census Bureau across the street because the statewide had that. I do not know what the city is doing, in effect, regating to your disability populations, to any of your other populations regarding census, which is coming up in March. I just bring that to you as an item that, have you considered it? Have you looked at it? Something you need to do. But anyway, the principal thing is those streets and parking. And with the new G. Street in there, you're having the whole area downtown of desperate, we need parking.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Cardigan. Yes.
Okay.
Next speaker is Noah Davidson.
Seems like you had a really long day, so thank you for hearing, hearing my presentation. I'm here to talk about 5G again. I'm reading, going to read from an article published six months ago in The Lancet, one of the oldest and most prestigious medical journals in the world. "A discussion on the rapid global proliferation on artificial electromagnetic fields would now be apt. The most notable is the blanket of radio frequency electromagnetic radiation, largely microwave radiation, generated for wireless communication and surveillance technologies, as mounting scientific evidence suggests that prolonged exposure to radio frequency electromagnetic radiation has serious biological and health effects. However, public exposure regulations in most countries continue to be based on guidelines of the International Commission on Non-Ionizing Radiation Protection and Institute of Electrical and Electronics, which were established in the 1990s on the belief that only acute thermal effects are hazardous. Prevention of tissue heating by radio frequency electromagnetic radiation is now proven to be ineffective in preventing biochemical and physiological interference. For example, acute non-thermal exposure has been shown to alter human brain metabolism by NIH scientists, electrical activity in the brain, and systemic immune responses. Chronic exposure has been associated with increased oxidative stress and DNA damage and cancer risk. Laboratory studies, including large rodent studies by the U.S. National Toxicology Program and the Ramazzini Institute of Italy, confirm these biological and health effects in vivo. By signing Sacramento up to be one of the first 5G cities in the world, you're exposing your constituents to unprecedented and unstudied levels of this radiation and putting us on the forefront of what Washington State University professor Martin Paul called, quote, "the stupidest idea in the history of the world," unquote. I can only assume whoever voted in favor of 5G did not spend much time researching this topic."
Thank you for your comments. Councilmember Jennings.
Mr. Davidson, thank you very much for your comments and appreciate you coming down here. To date, we've had our IT director talk to you. We've also worked with Congresswoman Metzli in working with you. And, and I've also now asked the city attorney to look into this matter as well. And so, you know, I know it's tough coming down here all the time, talking to us. And I just want to let you know that we have heard your, your cry. We are responding and trying to get you as much information as possible. So I'm going to ask the city attorney to communicate with you to let you know what our next steps will be.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings.
I appreciate that a lot. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker is Ron Elmsley.
Mr. Elmsley.
Oops. Let's see. It was on October 25th of last year that I had to call these people. My wife needed to go to the hospital and be admitted. But the only way to get admitted to the hospital is through the emergency. And she was too weak to put up setting and stuff like that. So I asked her, she wouldn't go with me. I asked them, what if I call the boys in blue? And she says, okay, I'll go. Well, they lectured to us. One of the things they said, the flu takes four weeks and a cold takes a week. And that was it. They asked for my signature. I asked what it was for. They said it was something about pay or something. I forget. So anyway, I signed it. I didn't read. And then, here's what they put down. Narrated, "To find a 74-year-old female sitting in bed with an acute fever for two days. Patient states she went to the ED last night and was advised to take Tylenol to reduce her fever. PT denied any SOB, CPO, H, A, N, V, or dizziness. PT was offered transportation to the ED via ambulance and refused. PT was advised to follow up with her paramedic, her permanent MD was informed of symptoms of a cold and septicus could include up to death. PT still refused transportation, signed, refused to transport." That's a lie. They got my signature, and they didn't tell us anything about septicus, about death.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
I think that, I reported it to the, to the complaint, and the complaint says it's those four guys against us too. So they win because-
Thank you for your comments, sir. I'll have our assistant city manager who oversees that department follow up.
Ron, why don't you call my office tomorrow? I'll be around.
Who should I talk to?
Me.
Oh, okay. Hey, be good.
Appreciate that, Mr. Elmsley. Okay, thank you. That concludes our evening for tonight. We're going to go ahead and adjourn at 7:31. I'll be, in memory of Coral Henning.